All right, guys, we'll go ahead and get started with the work session. That's the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, this will be starting our six o'clock workshop. You all will bear with us tonight, we're working with our new assembly meeting software, it's been delayed due to several things, and this is the first time the commissioners are seeing it. So they're seeing what I'm seeing up front, but they see their own task, and you'll be seeing a display as well from what we can see, and we'll also be able to demonstrate information that's from the library and the likes of Dave. Again, this is the e-board assembly that the school board uses, and also big county and a lot of local governments do, and this is in the test environment. So once we get finalized with everything, we go out public, you'll go under our city website, go to meetings, and then there'll be a link to this, and it'll take you right to this for the public view. It's really good software, and when we start, like, two weeks ago, we sent out items to the commissioners, do you have anything you want to add to the meeting? So they have a week before we publish it to the media, a week, and then when we get that out, we'll be able to give it to the media, and then it'll also be on our website, and you'll be able to see everything that we see, and so we get financials finalized and things, and we attach it. It's more or less an open view for the public to see and also record it, it's a really good software that we're using some of our splash funds to do this. But going over, commissioners, anything we need to add or remove to the agenda of the workshop? If not, we'll open up to the minutes of the January ninth meeting. Again, a lot of this was given back to you earlier, if you have any additions or relations to the minutes from December twelfth? Or from, excuse me, from January nine? Here none, we'll add it to the consent agenda for approval under new items under consent agenda and new business. No proclamations or appointments, splash items, we do have one item. Guess we're gonna bring this up and let Steve, Police Chief, talk about it, I tend to just meet with him, and they can talk about what we are, but we're talking about items for our new patrol cars, or Mike, y'all want to go into this?
I'm gonna let Chief Owen, he knows where that might be.
You're gonna meet up?
Yes.
Yeah, my IT hat for our other side, because I work with the county, we've been dealing with this, WatchGuard is this company that county patrol, city patrol has used ten-plus years, almost fifteen years. Motorola has bought WatchGuard out, and they are changing, as technology changes, the camera systems for our cars and body cameras that our officers wear are changing. We are currently have five cameras waiting to be repaired, that they don't know when they're gonna get the parts for, it's a, again, it's an older technology. So we asked them to come up and meet with us, Chief Bowen, Investigator Allen, Tommy Bradford, the major, Matt Cole, the lieutenant, myself, Daniel Jones, which we handle the IT side for the county side, we sat down with them and want to know what's the life? Well, the body cameras are discontinued, you had till around October of last year to buy anymore. They've now moved to the V three hundred, which is this item right here, which is the bodyborne camera now. It's a nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that's about what we were paying for them originally. So we got into talking with them about that, saying, all right, they will still work with the current computer camera system, hard drive system in their cars, but it's got to ask for software upgrade. Which also, we have a server that's downstairs, and Sheriff's Office has its servers for all of our camera evidence is stored. When the officers or investigation needs to pull that evidence, they pull that evidence, save it, and saves it on that system, because we know courts can go on for years. So we have to have that data, it's in an encryption system, it's gonna be pulled by certain people, the chief and investigator and sergeants when they need it for the DA and all that. So we started asking them, all right, what's the life of the car cameras, which is this right here, it's sixty-three hundred and fifteen dollars? And they said to us, we don't know when the end of the life, but it's coming. So looking ahead, not looking right now, but looking ahead, we got three brand-new cars, we still, we only got one down to shop, two sitting out back, that we're still waiting to start the twenty-ninth, I believe, the first car? Get started, or the twenty-eighth, or twenty-something.
Yes, it is a month.
So waiting to get started, get installed, and we're worried about putting the old technology back in there with the new car, and if they give us end of the life, we're wanting to be going back in and reinstalling this in a car. So our thoughts are to go ahead with these three new cars as we continue on, is upgrade these as we go. Now, these cars, these have been in here since these first explorers were put in, and we're in the same boat in the county, we're ordering, they have already ordered one new system at the last commission meeting for a car that we're taking out of administration, put on patrol. So right now, we're looking at the sixty-three hundred and fifteen dollars plus the nine ninety-five, this other stuff is things that we don't need, and we're waiting to hear back from our salesmen. The whole, I was a little aggravated when I seen it was sixty-three thousand, but they're trying to sell us a server and software, we got all this stuff, so. A little aggravated with Motorola, because they didn't do their homework on our company, our city and our county done us both this same way, it's been nearly a month ago when we met with them, and we just got this this morning. So I kind of got over it with them on the phone, I need to do the homework, look at what you currently have, we've been with this company fifteen years, and there's records, you need to figure it out, I need a price for just three basic car systems with body cameras. So what we're asking is that we go ahead for our officers, again, this is safety and evidence for them, keeps them. Thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, which will be cut out of our splash. And then we get, when we get vehicles around next time, we'll have to add this to the, our. And we, and sheriff's officers in the same boat as they move forward. Asking for this, and they are ready to be, we'd like to get them here now, because we got a car fix that happened at the end of the month, we hate to delay much longer. If we don't go ahead and do it, then we'll have to do it later, it's gonna cost. Cameras are on constant, the front, the back where the inmate, where the prisoner cage is, and it's got the audio for there, you know, catch and do the thing. Issues, if they turn around and hit their body camera, it turns the body camera on, plus the car camera, everything, it works away from the car as the officer approaches different situations, he feels the need to record. All right. Financial software, we have been looking at something besides QuickBooks for our city, we have a lot of downtime or manual input time for mainly input, and all the taxes that come in from Harris when they're sent to us. It's been this way for a long time, and we're really outliving what QuickBooks can do. We went with three different companies based on what some other cities have used, Harris Local Government, G Works, and Edmunds Software. Now, this is the quotes on it, and we've done a simple breakdown here of what they are. I'm gonna let Acol go into this, because she's the one that dealt with this and met with them, I have looked at all three of them, but I'll let her talk about why she feels which one's the best and what we're going for.
The Edmunds GovTech actually came out and did a very detailed, probably about three hours demo. They are able to offer everything and more than we could need at this point and in the future. They are ranked high in the state of Georgia, as well as in other states. I have reached out to a couple of the cities and counties that use Edmunds, they're all really pleased, talking about the ease of support. They did say, you know, at the end of the year, when things are coming to the end of the year, then everybody's, may have to call you back or whatever, you know, but they're all really pleased. The first investment, of course, includes the software setup, subscription, everything for them to pull, all of our data out of QuickBooks, all of our accounts are in QuickBooks. They will go out and extract all of that data and upload it into their system, they will actually come out and do training on the system. They have a, I think what they called it, a hub for commissioners, you can actually go out and look at the dashboard for your, for any of the departments, but, for example, the police department, if you want to go out and put in your line item that you're looking under, see how you stand on your maintenance? You can click on that, it'll tell you exactly what was spent for your maintenance, how much you budgeted for maintenance, how close you are, basically looking at a budget without having to be printed off.
Like a year to date dashboard, like what we see now.
And you can look at, you can, if you like looking at graphs, you can look at your graph, set it the way you want to look at it. They are able to meet with, they can pull our tax information from the state and do everything that we've been doing manually, they can do it all. Harris Smart Fusion, I know Roswell was going to Smart Fusion, they are quite a bit, as you'll see, more expensive. Not only that, but I have been told, I had, they did not come out and do a demo for me, they didn't, all they sent me was a quote. You know, I have been told that it's harder to get them on the phone at times when you do need support. You know, they, they can do the billing, I know the county is actually moving, Angie and them are moving away from using Harris. I believe they already have, as far as for their tax stuff. G Works, really, after they sent me their quote, they called me back and said, how, how much of a deal breaker is it if we can't do your tax stuff? I'm like, well, you know, that, that's a big thing, that's what the whole thing was, it would be a complete deal breaker. As you see, they're very, lot cheaper, but they cannot do what we need as far as taxes or anything in the future.
So how many tax records did we put in for invoices?
We put in twenty-two hundred tax records manually.
So that's creating a manual invoicing QuickBooks, twenty-two hundred times that all three ladies would sit there and just pound in, Dave. If people come in and we hadn't counted, we had to make, and we've done this for years, and it was a big time-consuming project. But several things, they also can do, the, a lot of the boys have talked about, direct deposits, this would be an option to do that as well, it has some. Keeps up, where they can actually keep up with what they, what they're doing on their sales as they can log in and see it. It's gonna pull the thing for the other counties that actually use it, I don't think you have to. I know County, the county was one of them. Some of the Monroe County in Georgia, Lawrence County, Crofton County, Sumter County, Stevens County, Bucks County, Meeter, Caweta, Turner, City of Motry, that's some of the, and this is some of the Georgia. The dots right here, how many Georgia cities and counties are using these, Caweta's a pretty good-sized county as well, and Calquart County.
They did, they do limit the size of governments that they support. And he told me when he come up for the demo that they were approached by Fulton County, and they turned them down because they did not want to get tied up in such a large city, it would take time away from everything else.
Yeah, we, we just wanted you to look at this, this is something we went out for three things, that we've seen, that they've seen at the conferences and what's out there, but it's really designed for municipality governments, we kind of. We've seen we got option if we wanted to do work orders in, that we're currently in with Iowa Works, but we've already invested, put a lot of stuff in there, and there's a lot more features that they, we felt they had, and plus. You know, this is a hosted service, where we're not having to purchase a server, it's hosted with their services and secure, we can have it to ten users, I believe. At one time, if we needed that much, as things are happening, and it's a lot of online payments for everything, and it also direct, what does it do on that, you said it?
When it, when you make an online payment, well, right now, we have to turn around and put that online payment into QuickBooks, it will automatically upload into the software, we won't have to touch it again, and it eliminates a lot of error between receipt book, put it in QuickBooks, write it on the sheet. You know, right now, where it comes through the web.
I was reading, and it, and it may not have been, it may not have been the G Works. Where they, they can change, one of them, it may not have even been that one, because I'm trying to find it again, where it was talking about, they can change our rates at any time.
Change our, if I'm not mistaken, it's like locked in for five years, please.
Talking about our.
Okay, like our annual thing that we pay.
Talking about our posted rates and things like that?
Well, it was our, it was our annual renewal. But in between that time, they could, they could raise our rates, and I, I wish I could find it, because I'm trying to get used to this technology.
Well, we, we'll get you the copy of each breakdown, let you see it, we just.
I mean, I'm sure y'all looked at it, I was just asking.
Yeah, I think they'll need to look at it, we'd like to let attorneys look at it too, so we'll get you hard copies so you can look at it, but, you know, in, in the breakdown, when we look at, you know, an inflammation fee of this, plus the first-year service annually, it would be twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for software services, twenty-four seven support, and all the hosting services there. Now, we can lock that in, if we done a five-year contract, things like that, it's a, it's a big difference for us to move to something like this, and we're just really outgrowing QuickBooks. It's not really designed for municipality governments.
I think everybody's outgrowing.
Yeah, and it's getting harder to get help with them. I mean, it's, you know, it's something we just recently updated the counties, which they use Microsoft Dynamics, and it's been there since I've been there, we just, uh, uh, two weeks ago, we moved to a new server, which we do in-house, we priced in-house versus hosting, and hosting is so, our. Size of our government is so expensive, it's gonna be three or four times what it would be if we hosted ourselves and buy a server, and every five or six years, update the server and software, so. Hosting's expensive, but we're a very small city, and so that's more or less just for information. Give you the month, talk about it, anybody ask questions to us about it, and then we can bring them back up next month. Group hug ordinance, I've been staying in contact with everyone about this, and when I sent you a text out later, once, when attorney sent this back, emailed it out to everybody, and luckily, they were currently working on this project with. City of Fayette, which is another city they form, and this is what was brought to us by Mr. Faircloth, and I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name.
Research, Mr. Brown, Lieutenant Research.
About investments of some properties here that they're interested in, and, you know, so here we got this back, and we've had it back for a little bit, so we're gonna see if y'all had any thoughts or divisions or what you see on it.
Looked pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, and I sent, I sent him a copy of it as well.
We did have one question on, say, if we host an event, will this license, can we use that license to also sell beverages at that event, say, if it's off-site somewhere? Is that what we're looking?
Yeah, I mean, trying to attract a community-type event, perhaps fall, Christmas, some type of seasonal, community gathering, and a lot of times, you see it in a lot of other cities, that there's a lot of vendor support, sometimes sole sponsorship. Surrounding establishments such as this, it wasn't sure if, you know, that would be a limiting factor, possibly a special provision, or.
They could do a special use permit based on, if it's, that's what we're learning too, if you brew your own stuff at the facility, but if you also have the other brands, you still have to get your wine and malt beverage license, if you do liquor, you have to do the liquor license as well. And certain things, I believe it has to stay either on the facility or inside a special use area.
Okay.
So not have to deal with him, because we've had that question come up before, I don't think I have, but I've had with, with the county as well, whenever they were doing the, the singing event down there on the arms.
I don't got talent.
Yes, yes, that kind of, so again, it would have to be a licensed facility that's currently, I'm Georgia licensed of those things, and if you go on a site, and it also gets back in ordinances, but.
Just kind of thinking as like, maybe like a Highland Games?
Yeah. So it might be on that same property, just outside of the property, around it.
Yeah, yes, and maybe.
As written, it is exclusive to premises.
Yeah, but just be outside of the facility.
Most likely.
If you think of like Jeffersons and other places, it was, you know, they got the porch setting, and we got it locked in, it's, you have to exit inside the facility.
So you got to get.
That's where a lot of the laws come in with that, that we had learned as well. It also come up at the pizza place on lookout as well, whenever doing that about outside seating and stuff, where you had to exit back inside.
Back through the main.
Yes, they could have just like a, can somebody grab and jump out and go, hand stuff across, and they kind of talked about that, but we can.
I believe the legal classification is through your garden.
Yes. Commissioners, do y'all have any thoughts on the ordinance?
I read it through, I think it just, I'm not wrong, it just seemed pretty straightforward, I didn't. I mean, it'd be, it'd be a first time for us, I guess.
But even if they get a license and do this, they still could go upstairs, rent the, go on the curb and have an event, just can use those licenses.
I don't know, we'd have to find out from the attorney, I just drafted a note here to ask.
At least, I think they have to have two different licenses too.
I think it'd be a special permit for a special event with alcohol, I think under V two, it talks about offer to sell any of the alcohol beverages, malt beverage, wine, including distilled spirits, but then that also gets into. Making your own stuff there and selling it, that's what this would allow to do, but the other stuff would follow into the other ordinance and ordinance. Have a step to the same permits as we went for the other vendors and restaurants. So they can sell a maximum of five thousand barrels.
A lot of barrels.
Yeah.
That's a hundred gallon or twenty gallon?
(laughing) I don't know what a barrel, I guess they look at a barrel.
Yeah, I think there's a standard size.
Yeah. There's a facility in Gatlinburg, similar to what y'all talking about, they brew their own downstairs, and you go upstairs to the restaurant.
Yeah, top of the rock's the same way, they brew their own beer there too, so you walk in, it's right to the right, and it also goes, goes down to the basement.
That's where theirs is. So it's kind of saying like, like an off-premise special event on the same premises or on the same property, just make it outside of being, moving it outside for special.
Yeah, just kind of like a, you know, a thing, but yeah, I think that would be a separate license.
Or it could just be a special event one time, they, you know, give you the thing, you say, and, you know, stay within those parameters, so, well, ask that of the attorney. Commissioners, any other thoughts? The next thing, if y'all please it, is to put it out for. Public input, public meetings, we have to have two public, probably three, two or three public inputs, set some dates per day, evenings, and probably at the next meeting, you know, like four or five o'clock the next time, and it would be citywide, within the zones for this. And possibly classifying it in one of our zones, which we would think would be what zone, answer, BR or just R, three, two or three?
Yeah, VR right now.
Yeah, so it would be all of our things for any type of establishments of that, and putting this, I think, identification in as well.
I guess we need limits on it.
Limits.
Like the number of, or is that, does that just fall under restaurants?
It'd be like a restaurant, I mean, we got, any restaurant can call our.
Hey, I just want to make sure, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if four or five want to come in and make their own beer and sell, and have four or five restaurants sign game.
I just want to make sure.
So is that a nod ahead to add this to the consent agenda, go ahead and see the public hearings, and what's said to them, just as soon as possible, give plenty of time for the media, based on our public hearing notice in our ordinance. All right. I bring up item seven as a downtown development authority, this is something that we've had in our ordinances, or in our code book since nineteen eighty-five, and I looked at it today, and I'd encourage you to go to the city of Trenton, look under, and just kind of Google the downtown development authority. We've talked about this a little bit, about what we can do, and investors along as Ryan, and then have asked about what we can do, kind of like IDA does for large corporations. And then Evan, since he's been appointed, me and him's been talking, and being part of our economic director for the city of Trenton, and Dave County, and also the IDA, this is where we can create a DDA, it was in development for quite a while, I'm not sure. How long and what we done, but it's things that we can do, and there's grants available, and there's things that we can do to help businesses as they come in. You know, we need to decide if we want to do this, if it's something we want to do to keep businesses coming in, and what we can do to help current businesses, new businesses.
The downtown development authority was very, very instrumental in a lot of things that happened, I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't part of the actual group, but I worked with them a lot, and there was, it was when Peter Sorbally was the downtown development director. And that was back when he secured the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar streetscape grant that, and, and I feel. and, and I feel certain if he had stayed on board, that would've, that would eventually happen, you know, while he was here. But, you know, then it got dissolved and, uh, kind of got put on the back burner.
And we, we used a lot of stuff and we got that picked back up and had a lot more stuff done. We were out of time and.
I know, but it, but, but it had, by the time, by the time we figured it out, it had more than doubled.
Yeah.
You know, in price, um, our cost.
Well, this is our MUNI code and you can go to our website and I just say the library MUNI code. And this is where it talks about under article two, section two dot, to enter the downtown development authority.
This is a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
If y'all don't remember it, it was.
It was. So my, my question to the commissioners, I mean, this is how long ago it was, Mr. Bill Tatum, Mike Tate, David Runnings, Larry Hayes, Eddie Girfer, Sherwood Iverson, Derrick Gaddis.
On the downtown development?
Well, that's going back in eighty-five whenever.
Oh, but it started.
If you look at the ordinance, it's just, that's one of the things we're really trying to do is every year update the ordinance with MUNI code. When things are done and we're gonna try to keep this stuff to date. And you have two two-year terms, two four-year terms, and three six-year terms for folks. So when they rotate on, off and on. But I also encourage you to go to the Georgia Municipal Association and just go and then look at the DDA sections. If it's something that we wanna do, we need to think about getting some members that's interested and get them out there. Let them talk to the commissioners or come in, put their name in the hat and we want, you know, folks, it's what we can do. They come up with ideas, what we can't do, keep these businesses, it's getting harder and harder. We got a lot of empty storefronts around here throughout the city. We'd like to see some more. We got a lot of property that people are looking forward to do and we'd like to be able to offer them something that can make it a lot easier for them to come in, so.
Yeah, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
So when I was pitching some people up in Chattanooga who see what the potential could be here in our little city, the first, one of the first things they asked were what kind of incentives does our city have? And so that's when I started going to Alex and nothing, there was nothing anybody can do for the small guy. But of course the IDA can do stuff for the big guy. So that's when I started talking about that, cause I do have some, you know, some unique businesses, unique eateries. Um, I had George Carter, uh, homeroom, St. John's Restaurant. He was down the other day to motel, I told him around Trenton. He asked if there was any incentives, some other people I talked to. So that's why I kind of mentioned this to you. You know, to kind of help the little guy to sort of just pick out.
So, and I spoke to y'all about it one time when we were offsite about, you know, links due. Ryan had mentioned, I think East Ridge had done this to one of their businesses where a percentage of sales tax.
Yeah, they get a four percent, uh, paid back sales tax per, for some of yous.
Of the sales tax of their individual.
Yeah, so that's East Ridge.
So is it, is like whatever the sales tax they turned in, they had to produce that information because we really helped sell that. So I didn't show what it is and then we, we try to give them a percentage, a percentage of that back. Just little things like that. And that's where we've got to find out legally what we can do. And when these folks come on, we got to send them to Trenton. So it's, uh, there's some stuff that's coming up in April. I'm gonna try to go to it myself just to get educated if we can. It's gonna be in Athens again. And if we need to get folks up here, we can. There's some online stuff, just need to dive into it and see where we are. It's something we wanna revitalize. I think we need to start stepping through that, talk to some people and let, let, let everybody know. You know, talk to us if you're interested. We need some good strong heads and the folks that.
Well, I'd like to be a part of that.
The difference in the, uh, the industrial development authority and the DDA, like you said, the industrial development authority is really for big, big businesses, but it's at the, it's at the front. The DDA was real instrumental in retaining people, like they did, um, I mean, I was even in fishery for facade grant. And that was the local banks gave a, um, gave a fifteen hundred dollar facade grant. If you, if you put, um, I don't remember how much, it might've been, I might've had to do fifteen hundred and then they matched fifteen hundred or something, but they did things all along the way that were, uh, that was really good for, you know, our businesses that are here now instead of, you know, the small businesses. They did several things.
Yeah, anything, yeah, like you said, the facade, anything to match pay or.
Yeah, so to take care of our current businesses and any new businesses and any kind of incentives or specials. See, there's, I encourage you to any, everybody, just go to downtown development, Georgia, GMA, Georgia Municipal Association. And there's a lot of information. I looked at so many stuff to try to print off and attach. We were kind of running behind on some stuff today. I took off after lunch to get down here and we had some issues down the sewer department that I had to help to win. And we had to, I had to call other reinforcements in and had to leave them. I had to get up here, get to work. So, uh, anyway, but I, I, if it is and we get nods on the head, I think we need to try to move forward and do this and helping our businesses. The businesses here that continue to come here also helps keep millage down with loss to splosh that stays up. If they come to do things, that's just a big out of the help our taxpayers continue to grow and keep taxes down on our, on our residents. That's what I cut off for now. Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, we're gonna go into the regular meeting. We're gonna go ahead and dial the regular meeting to order. We're going to denunciation, pledge allegiance. All right, I thank everybody for being here. February, all you men, think of your sweet marks tomorrow. It's Valentine's Day. It's a reminder for myself as well. So, uh, I thank our wives and our sweet marks for what they do and, uh, remember that day. Let's go for it. Dear Father, we thank for this day and thank God bless upon this city and these folks that are here, commissioners, employees, home residents. And where as we go, be with us and as we conduct business of the city as being the best stewards of that tax funds and doing what we have to grow our little city and keep it safe. Be with us as we go with your precious name. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. If it is a regular scheduled meeting, takes place the second Monday, Thursday, Monday. Local news was notified, it's in our hallway, it's also posted on our website. Commissioner Roach, I believe we had all the commissioners here, so we do have a corner to do that. Commissioner Norris, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner House, Commissioner Wood. This time we're starting with, uh, commissioners reports. We'll start with Commissioner Norris.
The city of Trenton Police Department answered two hundred and fifty-nine calls per service during the month of January twenty twenty-three. Conducted two thousand and ninety business checks, answered two animal complaint calls, responded to seven domestic disturbances, eleven trespassing, four cancerous activities, and were seventeen traffic crashes. Sixty-one stops were conducted in the city, resulting in a total of thirty-three citations being issued. Of those issued, eleven of them were speeding. Driver's license violation was four, vehicle registration was five. Obstruction of a law enforcement officer was one, insurance violation was one, falling too closely was one, failure to maintain lane, one, seatbelt violation, one, industry device, five, criminal trespass, two, and stop sign violation, one.
Thank you for your question. Commissioner Powell, uh, Park, Sheriff, we have a little bit of our, our post.
Okay. Community center was rented eighty-two hours last month. Animal control, we had eleven work orders or complaints. And recreation, ball fields and parks are not being used right now, so it's slow at the park at this time.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Can we get all the lifeguards filled? I think that's right.
I think he's got four right now, rather than pass the certification.
So we got, is that everybody you need? All right, fire and utility, Commissioner House.
Um, the sewer department had seventeen underground locates, three emergency locates, and twelve sewer calls. And not the inspections or, um, new construction. They had four room log of three, property reviews, two, and two additions, with a total of eleven. And completed three electrical and HVAC employment inspections and a new construction at Myrtle Circle. Fire department had a total of eighty-six calls that were dispatched and canceled and routed thirty-three of them. Seven of them were fire-related, two accidents, twenty-nine medical, and fifteen standbumps. That's it.
Street department, Commissioner.
Other than our normal stuff, we, um, we did, we was very happy to assist, uh, Ryan and Jameson and Jerry Peniger on, uh, well, they actually put the signs up, but we tried to help clean up the best we could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll let.
Around the great lawn.
Yeah.
Was happy to do that and we appreciate all that they did. I think it looks really good. There's a lot of work there and I know, I know, I know what it's like to volunteer and still have to beat your head up. Our equipment has not made it to GovDeals yet, but, uh, we do have all the information. And Vansel's gonna get that done before our next meeting, right? So we'll have a whole list of equipment on there and I, I did have a couple of calls from people out in the community. Um, I guess they had heard that, maybe they heard at the meeting or wherever, a, a couple of pieces of equipment that we wanted to know if we could sell them, run it out to them. And I told them just go and go deals to, to a bid and they didn't like that, but, um.
That's the fair way for us to do it.
But if they called here, um, April, I mean, that's, you know, that's, you know, the good thing is if they, if they buy it, they don't have to pay shipping, you know? And one thing I wanted to mention is, uh, okay, we're looking for two seasonals. So if you know, you know, two young guys with big, strong backs, we'd love to, or girls. Um, we need two seasonals. And then I wanted to mention that I went on the tour the other day.
Yes.
You don't get no credit for it.
Okay. Explain what tour it was.
Yeah, we went on a tour with the, uh, with the IDA. I said, wait, there was several of us. There was a representation from the school, from the, uh, from the, uh, school board, the, uh, the county, the city, the library, the optimist, uh, you name it. And we had a really nice tour. We toured Vanguard, which was really interesting. I had never, I couldn't believe that I'd never been through there, but it was really, really interesting. And we went through the whole process of making a whole trailer. And, I mean, that's really, really impressive down there. And then we went to Antigone. They couldn't really, um, show us a whole lot because of all their clean rooms and stuff, but, um, but it was still nice to go in there and meet some of the folks and, and just kind of, you know, put eyes on it. Then we went to Trenton Pressing, went through that and the JDA fed us lunch there. But it, it was really nice and if you ever get the opportunity to do that, you should. And, uh, my hair showed up.
I can believe it.
Told me to take good notes and the next thing, we was leaving on the bus and Evan says, where's, where's Mike Norris? And I said, well, I know, I know he's here, cause he, he told me to take good notes. But I didn't know that meant take good notes, cause I'm out here.
I already toured all those places. I've been in them for years.
But, but it wa, it was really, e- especially Vanguard.
Yeah, and that's one reason I didn't go, plus we were doing a sewer project.
Well, I know you've been all over them anyway.
And that's kind of like we have. It's amazing what happens in here in our city and some of these businesses.
I was thoroughly impressed.
Yeah, and the one that gets me the most is right over here behind us, kind of like it does all the league shirts, the Ford King Ranch edition stuff, that little knitwear place right here behind it. They do their, their major teams, SEC teams, and they're all the ones that do all their shirts and stuff. It is amazing.
I mean, you wouldn't blame all that stuff's going on right here in our backyard. And they're, and they're looking to, I mean, like Trent Pressing is expanding, Antigone's expanding, um.
Tri-Tex expanding.
Tri-Tex is expanding too. Jeff mentioned that today. They, they've been inspecting that for more washers and employees and stuff.
So we really do have a lot going on. And our unemployment rate's what, like two percent, two point three percent? I was shocked. I thought there's at least five percent that wouldn't work anywhere. So anyway, but I, but we are looking for two seasonal, folks, if y'all have, that part time, full time.
Anytime. All right, well, my report as well for the month, again, we, we've been looking, a lot of this information from the software companies. Again, we, what we're, I'll look at the financials tonight. It's gonna be our end of the year. We also, uh, have got some information to get back to the commission on the, uh, our audit of, uh, last year. I guess we got that to get out to you, come in. Sorry we didn't have it for you tonight. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, just, you know, working with each department, uh, and starting in, you know, January and February, start a new budget year with us, getting everything into books. It's just been really busy, uh, here and I appreciate all the employees of what they do and things coming up, uh, issues. Again, we talk about as they do come up, we, everybody teams together and helps with whatever department it is. And, uh, even today, when we were here, Steve, one of his patrolmen come up and we're looking at some different things that can make their jobs easier for them. And, uh, that's what it is, is, is things that employees see or do and they bring to affirmation. We had a lot of discussion about it and where we go and so it's just a team effort all the way and I appreciate what everybody does. But instead of me going through everything, uh, that I read off our bank statements and our reconciliation, this is about what our monthly stuff is, uh, again, this can be open record anytime. I thought I'd just do a short blurb, uh, since we're gonna be working with a financial software. Again, this is our general fund account and again, we worked two months in the rear. So this is end of the physical year of twenty-two that we'll be looking at financials. Uh, general fund at nine hundred five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Our sewer fund, which is our utility that we have at the end of the year, was a hundred fifty-six thousand, so a hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Our hotel motel funds, a hundred fifty thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. Trent Police Department, this is a seizure special funds for donations or anything that's given in or they get seized. This is two thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and five cents. Uh, Trent Fire Department as well, this is a funds that we use for donations and or, uh, raising for our junior program that we've talked about for the firefighters and EMS of that, two thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Our art funding, uh, I talk about this, eight hundred four thousand, a hundred fifteen dollars and eighty cents. Uh, this week, Commissioner, uh, or last week, Commissioner, uh, House, myself, uh, Dwayne and his crew, we met with our engineers. Uh, we've got, uh, fixing to have our RFP ready within, we think, maybe the end of this week for what we're calling our bar screens, which cleans up a lot of our trash that they're dealing with. That's another tour. I think we all just get up and go down there and show everybody. Take the cameras with us. I think they need to see what goes on down there, what kind of heartaches that we live with as these commissioners, their employees. Uh, we've all stepped in to help as, as we did today and these guys are called day and night, just like, uh, fire service and law, they, they, that stuff runs downhill. There's no stopping it. We gotta handle it somehow. We've invested in some equipment to help them, but we're fixing to hope this is gonna be a tremendous amount of work that's gonna happen. And we've got some other improvements that we're gonna be working on that we have in the past few years of, you know, Curtis taught skate, I've heard Dwayne talk about that, how we, like all this rain event we've had for these, this last year or more has been really trying on our system. And we're taking on two and three fold what we should. We got pumps running twenty-four hours a day, several days in a row, so much groundwater pressure coming in. We had, we okayed an emergency fund last month, if you remember, it was twenty-two thousand dollars for a pump. We couldn't rebuild it. Twenty-two thousand something dollars for a pump. So this is some of the things that we're hoping that will improve and we've gotta have this stuff and be prepared. So we'll have more time, uh, information when that goes out. Savings, this is what we, you know, put back. Savings, this is what we, you know, put back, some of the larger funds that we have up here for the general fund, we usually make a big push into this each year for savings. We try to have at least three plus months of, of funds in case something happens. Our twenty-fifteen splotch, sixty thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars, that's our, what we're gonna be using for the animal shelter. Twenty-twenty-one splotch to date, I must failed that problem, two thousand, two hundred one thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Then here's our general fund revenue for the end of the year, so this is December revenues for two hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and ten cents. It's really big because our tax notices, people are trying to get everything paid for by the end of the year, so that's a pretty large amount, and the same thing, the expenses for the, but December's two hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. So twelve months of revenue collected in our city was two million four hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and forty-eight cents, and expenses is two hundred, or two hundred twenty-eight, two million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eight dollars and forty-four cents, so we had a, a good, a good savings that's gonna be going in is one reason why this is so high right here. So again, we operate as, I think our tax, final taxes were due.
January sixth.
January sixth, and we operate on that big, large amount all year round, so taxes that was paid last year is what we operate in twenty-three, so. And then we did reverse again. Sewer revenue for the month, charge for services is our sewer base, is forty-seven thousand three hundred and one dollars. Expenses for the month was thirty thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. January, twelve months of sewer was fifty, five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents, and rev, expenses was four hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents. So we were ahead there to help put back in savings and funds for other things as well. So that'll be my report, and also be the financials for December and for the end of the year. Again, this will be unaudited. Is that the audit that we had was this?
No, they just done twenty-twenty-one.
That's right. So it's twenty-one's that we have, and this will be ahead for the auditors very quick to be certified and set in the partner revenue fairly soon, so. Any questions, comments? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the financials as soon.
I'm like motion.
Motion, Commissioner Powell.
I'll say.
Seconded by Commissioner Wooten. We have a discussion. Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion okay. You know, we're gonna get into appearances tonight. I don't see Ms. Elwigs gas, or Ms. Jennifer, please go ahead.
Thank you. So Commissioner Wooten already touched on it, but a couple of weeks ago, dozens and dozens of trees and shrubs were installed along Town Creek, particularly in the rain burden that's behind the Dade County Courts facility. That was a multi-organizational effort to include Limestone Valley, scenic Dade, the Lima School sent volunteers, Hands Up sent volunteers, and all told, well over forty community members showed up to help with that. Thank you again, Commissioner Wooten and the Streets Department for helping to clear the brush. We removed a lot of invasive species, particularly Chinese civet and Japanese honeysuckle, which can be extremely detrimental to the native habitat and the environment generally. We also picked up a lot of trash, and we do have several plants left over that did not get installed that day. So with your permission, we would like to organize an additional event in a couple of weeks at the end of the month. Stephen Bonzko with Limestone Valley has recommended that they be placed in the city park, along Town Creek, kind of behind the parking lot where that, that first segment of trail was installed. And this bright Dade County senior was at the cleanup and has taken an interest in helping to organize the potential one coming up, as long as, as the commission and the approved of our doing so. I just put her on the spot, but she's doing a, a senior capstone project that's related to water quality, so I'm delighted at her interest and enthusiasm for what we're doing.
All righty. Take care, library, as soon.
All right, well, thanks again, as always, for having me here to present on the library. I'm proud to announce I am a nana.
Well, right.
My daughter did have her baby last week. He's one week old today, so I had to leave holding him to kind of, happy to hear. These are our January statistics at the library. Once again, you're seeing really high numbers. The door count, two thousand two hundred fifty people for the month of January. I think that's just pretty fantastic at the library. Computer use, two hundred ninety-five, printer use, four ninety-six. We sent sixty faxes. Twenty-five people used our study rooms over the course of the month. Those are the two different sized rooms that you can go in, and we have people do job interviews, or they're meeting privately with someone, so those were used quite a bit. Meeting rooms used twice. We added fifty-six new books. Please come check out our new book collection. We have them all on display if you're interested. And someone asked me how many out-of-state patrons we had, and so I looked that up, and we currently have six hundred and twenty-six patrons that pay out-of-state fees. That means they pay the twenty-five dollar fee a year to have access to everything that our library has to offer. All right, some program highlights for January. We collaborated with Cloudling Canyon State Park, and their naturalist, Jerry Wallace, came and did a Going Batty program. So he presented that once for an after-school program at four P M., and he presented again for some homeschoolers at one P M. later in the month, and we had record attendance for that. It was incredible. We had forty-two participants total over the month for those two programs. It was very well attended. The other slide over there, Pokemon League. We handed out some flyers at school, and because some, several people said, "Oh, we didn't know this was happening." So we do that twice a month, the second and the fourth Thursday from four to six P M. And wow, January saw a lot, saw a lot of participants at our Pokemon Club. We had fifty-eight people come over the month of January to our Pokemon League. And once again, I tell people, Pokemon has so much to offer in literacy. It helps kids build their fluent reading skills. They battle, they have to read the cards, they have to do arithmetic, problem solving, and they have to work collaboratively. And what's really great about Pokemon Club is it's intergenerational, so we've got older kids working with younger kids, we've got parents that grew up playing the original Pokemon, helping kids. It's, it's adding a lot of vibrancy to our library, so we're really happy to have that. We also added two new children's iPads in our children's area. Those are preloaded with educational software for kids to be able to get on and access different learning opportunities. I don't think I have this slide on here, because before I made the slideshow, it was after I made the slideshow, we got a brand-new resource as well. They're called Launchpads, and you can check them out, just like you can a Chromebook, and they are preloaded tablets, you don't need any internet, and they are educational reading apps loaded onto these Launchpads. There's Read Aloud Storybooks, there's Phonics, there's five different levels, H two to eleven, that you can come and check those out and get some really great sort of educational reading apps along, take along in the car, you don't need the wifi for that. And our Lego show, oh, you see, see Gunner over there. He, he took part in our Lego Showdown, which we do every month, where we challenge the kids to build something or do something. There's three different levels of challenge, and we've seen a lot of participation with our Lego Showdown. Oh, there's our Launchpad. They did get the slide in there. What do you know? There's our Launchpads. You get a two-week checkout, no renewals. You can see these kids are at a, I think they're at a soccer game or a basketball game, and they're playing on their Launchpads, learning on their Launchpads, some reading apps. Our teen space, I think I mentioned last month, we are sectioning off our teen space from three to close Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We've got snacks, we've got a little curate setup in there, there's gaming, study room. It's been really popular. If you flip to the next slide, you can see we took a quote, "The snacks made my day." This is magical. That was a teen that came in, and they were just so excited to see some, they came in after school, and they saw some snacks there, and they were really excited. And next, we have our month-long exhibit up. This is, Lone, it's a collaboration between Georgia Public Libraries and the Georgia Commission on the Holocaust, and we have a banner exhibit up, Witness to the Holocaust. You can see William Alexander III, he was part of a segregated battalion in World War II. He was a photographer, he was there, and he recorded the liberation of Buchenwald. So you can come and look at the banners that will be up all month. That's what they look like, that's not in our library, but that is what the banner exhibit looks like, so please come check it out. There's also a reading list, and there's a couple different things that you can do along with that exhibit if you're interested. And we have a special program on February sixteenth, that's this Thursday, at five P M. We have a historian coming in and giving a special presentation on the Holocaust in historical context, how did it happen? So that should be really interesting. I hope that we can get folks out there. It is all age-appropriate, so please, you know, if, you know, if you're doing a unit or not on World War II or that timeframe, please come by and check out this special presentation at the library on February sixteenth at five P M. Oh, that was our program we had, The Night Sky, it was super fun. We did Constellations, Moon Faces, and Rockets. That's our monthly kids' club where we do a STEAM activity, and the kids learned a little bit about each one of those things. Our Young Creatives is tomorrow, Valentine's Day. We've got a teen artist coming, Ivy Nafla, I hope I'm pronouncing her last name right. She's gonna be coming and doing temporary hand art with our teens, so we hope that we get some young teens coming out to join us for that. These are some of our new books that are on our, our book display, they just came in. These are our adult books. You can see we've got a mixture of nonfiction and fiction. Come check it out. We've got some good reviews from some, from some staff as well as some patrons. And these are some of the kids' books, again, some really great nonfiction. One of my favorites, The Science of Light, it's all about like biodiminescence and the light that we see in nature, so things like that. Come check it out. You can always find us, everything on our calendar, C H R L dot org. We post daily on Facebook and on Instagram. If you have any questions, just call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots for Dave.
Well, as you all know, I am not Sandy White.
I'm sorry.
But I'm delighted that you all have her coming every week. She's gone this week to a conference in the state of Georgia where all the presidents, CEOs, and people come together and learn new things for us. So she couldn't come tonight, so she asked me to just come. You all can kind of walk through each one of these pictures. You have them in your computer. That's the webinars that we're having for small business development centers. They're short, but they're very good. I've looked at some of them, and I think that, you know, if you spent the time looking at any of them, you would keep looking at them. Okay? The next one is, we are looking for a welcome center manager. You know, we had the, we had one young lady, she was excellent. She had, she had to leave and go back to Memphis, so that didn't work out real well. But we've interviewed some, and we're interviewing two more this next week, so we hope to get that position filled right now. We do have an interim person who's there now, so, but will not be the person who will be applying, so if you need something at the Welcome Center, there is someone there all of the time. I don't know how many of you all that have small businesses have been receiving Valentines, but some small businesses, people have been bringing them Valentines. So what this person does is sometime in the day is brings businesses Valentines that people in the community have sent to you. So I think it's a really cool idea, it's just fun and interesting for the community, and that's one of the things that Sandy had hoped that we could do. Okay, the last one is, well, next to last, this one shows the activity, the four, twenty, and twenty-four. It was a cold time during January, and I guess it was February that it's really rained every day, but it rained some in January. But you can see the numbers are a little bit down, but it's not our peak season. How's that? Okay? All right, the next one is the, an event that's going to be happening that I hope that some of you all will take part in. The Dade County Lions Club on St. Patrick's Day will be having a five K, ten K run. You can call them at a number that's probably up there. Let's see, that's.
Ronnie Cartwright.
Yeah, Cartwright, Mr. Cartwright, and he will be glad to help you know what to do, so let's see if we can go out and support that for the Lions Club, because they do some really good things in our community. And do you all have any questions? Okay, that's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I know many legal matters I may bring forward.
I've got one thing I don't, I don't think I need to bring forward, but we might, just in case.
Okay.
Back in, I think, November, October, we're going on the Flubody.
Yep.
That's been approved by our attorney, so I guess I need the commissioners approval to go ahead and implement this policy.
Okay, well, I had it under our new business, and it has went back with review from Steve and attorney, all of us from Boggs, so this is the final track, and y'all have a copy here on your hands.
Yes.
Any unfinished business, commissioners, if you know? I didn't bring it up. No, any citizens participation, anyone want to speak to the commission? Recognize Nathan Wooten.
Thank you. So I know it's early, but it'll be here before we know it.
Sure.
We are in full swing, Clay and Bill. Nineteen forty-five Dade County Fair.
Thank you, sir.
And what you're gonna see here, the front page is kind of the, the artwork of what we're gonna be doing this year. If you'll notice, all the music is all local folks, except for our headliner. Anybody who's an American Idol fan will recognize her from last year, she was runner-up at American Idol. She lives in Winchester, Tennessee, so she's done a headline for us. We start at noon, we begin about, the fireworks are over about ten, the rest of us end about two A M. in the morning. We get done, taking directions from Ronnie Page. So I just put that on the front for information purposes, the, the meat of the thing is behind. It's a special event application, which we have to do every year, and I guess the real meat is the very last page. If you'll look, we're asking for these roads to be closed once again. It's really the same as the last four years. Cry Street, one end to the other, Railway Lane, from one end to the other, Montague Street up to the Civic Center, and Bond Street up to the.
First residence.
The Mason, well, the Mason, Mason Lodge. Couple things are gonna be different this year. We're gonna move all the food, the food trailers and food court and all that, because we're getting so many of those over to the Scout Hut parking lot, which I'm hoping will be paid.
Yeah, we got some information on that, me and Terry's gonna need one.
The, the car show got so big last year, we're gonna, we're gonna put it over, it will take the entire parking lot at Civic Center, it will take Montague Street, and it will take part of the parking lot, also, that's gonna be paid by Railway Lane, the big one. I think he had about two hundred fifty cars there last year. Where they all came from, I have no idea. Right now, we've got, we've already got about thirty-five vendors booked, and it's like way early in the game, so. So we're just asking that you guys would, would look over our identification. Y'all helped sponsor the thing last year, much appreciated. It, it made a whole lot of things a whole lot easier.
So we're asking for that then, too?
Yes, we'd love that. You don't have to put any money in, just say we're co-sponsoring.
Y'all remember, he said no money.
The biggest issue that we had last year, and I don't even know if those signs are still there, but there was no pet signs everywhere in the park. We had to run a few people off, and they weren't very happy with their, with their dogs, and, and my theory is, and of course, I'm as big an lover as anybody, but when you put a, a dog in a strange surroundings with hundreds and sometimes thousands of people, they.
And loud noises.
And loud noises, they do things that they don't normally do, so if that's still the policy down there, we're pushing it, because we're putting it on everything we put out that says, "No pets allowed in the park."
I've been asked about that, about pet-friendly area or something with things, and I haven't heard a talk to Terry about it. I don't know if he's ever gonna ask that or not.
No, I haven't.
I was down there the other day, and it was, everybody had their pets.
Yeah, it's, it's nobody, it's not made like.
And one of the things that we do. And one of the things is we do that more, things is having the areas and dispensers. You know, a lot of places I go to, and I go to parks camping and stuff, and we take an hour or two. You know, they got the dispensers for the things and the responsible that people should do. We've also, I've witnessed several times, people that have been walking their dogs that have not been doing that, because I've stepped in it two or three times in an area where we've been parking on city parks and walking to the restaurants on the square. We've noticed it several times, and we actually seen it one day, so it's, you know, we want people to be responsible for it.
I'll weigh in on that.
Yeah, sure.
You all know, nobody loves animals more than I do. But I will tell you, I strongly suggest that pets not be allowed that day, and I'll tell you why. We have, we have escaped it by the skin of our teeth twice. There was a dog there three years ago, and it actually bit someone. But it just happened to be an animal lover that was not gonna cause any trouble. You know, when dogs are, just like Nathan said, when dogs are put in situations like that, if it was a, if it was an animal event, that's totally different, because the person that ruins that animal, their mind is totally on that animal and whatever's going on with that animal again. But in this situation, there's a lot of loud music, there's a lot of loud noise, there's kids everywhere, there's just a lot of unknowns. And it's just really not, I mean, and y'all know how I am about animals, but it's not the place, and especially when things like fireworks start. That, I mean, it does. You know, we experienced, we went to the, what was the place?
Top of the Rock, is that the place over in Jasper?
Yeah, Top of the Rock.
The pizza place, whatever the name of that place is.
On the top of them.
Anyway, I know this dog was as docile as it could be, but it actually bit my grandson in the face. And it's just because it was, it was in a, I mean, I could see it was right there at the edge looking over the blood, and it just didn't know, it was just scared. And he went over to pet it, and it bit him in the, I mean, I've just seen too many things. And you know how I am about animals, but I'm just saying, at this event, it does, they do not need to be there.
So I'd suggest that when we come up under maybe items, we go ahead and propose that we're gonna co-sponsor it. We're setting that policy.
So we're good. Everybody's been awesome down there the last four years about this.
And so we need to hold this any longer to approve, which is the same thing again?
It's the same thing, actually.
Y'all feel comfortable with that, we can just get this out of the way and keep moving forward.
Y'all got any questions on the Fair at all? Or the Commissioner's vote of order we're gonna have? City versus county?
I wish I could, but that's the weekend my Fair takes off on.
It's Tuesday.
Was it the Fourth, then?
It's on the Fourth.
Yeah. North Carolina. Alright, thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else, Commissioners? Now we'll go into new business.
I think I will.
I go there quite a bit and just sit and watch the water, you know. I see people out there with dogs. And I know there's no dogs out there, but a lot of them, like we're, love the dog. So do we need to start keeping those people out of there as the police department, or just let them keep coming, or?
I'm not talking about the park, I'm just talking about the fourth.
Well, I know, you're talking just one of me, I'm talking about the overall.
It's a question I've been asked, and I've been being asked, Terry on the side of what our thoughts were with it. I mean, it might be something that we all need to think about. It's, if it is, we have to invest in something that people can pick that up, have a policy, something that the park employees can afford, so I don't know, that's not my way of house, but it's. You know, we've got some areas where we might could put a little doggy area where they can run free and get out.
That's what I was thinking about, for parks that we just get cleared, put a doggy area.
Well, we got that big open area over there behind Ingles, too. We could fence something in, put some of those little things in there. That's huge for some, sometimes people have a place where just a little ground and animals get together. I mean, that could be something that we can collaborate about and see.
But where the, Terry was, they have to be the fence, the chain of fences. There's your dog, and they won't have to cross the park with their dogs to get to them.
Yeah, I'm trying to get some conversation with Soloff. Meant to talk to Wayne a few times, but Wayne had a little battery issue he was out with. He was tied up with an employee the other day when I stopped by, but I'm gonna talk to him about some more of the clearing we're wanting to do. And then our employees have got somebody who's gonna cut some of the trees up, instead of chewing them up for firewood that come to us. But again, it's been so wet, and we really don't have a good easement into that area. MacBriar Construction's one in there, done it first with us, which he had some issues on the back of his, but he wasn't started that, you know. And I think we discussed that, and let him do that for twenty-five hundred. He's got some other trees, and I think Ronnie and Keith went in there. What trees you wanna keep, we got tape around, and everything else needs to go. But there's a big area over there beside Ingles, at the Soloff buildings, and behind Circle K that is holding a lot of water. And a lot of water is causing mosquitoes, and there's a ton of trash in there. I wanna talk to them and see if they also give us permission that while they're there or help donate to help clean that up and make it look nicer and neater to get some of that storm around, ease them back in. Because it eventually ends up to the creek, but it's, the way it's doing it now is causing a lot of erosion, and it's holding a big area of mud and nastiness that don't need to be there. And then we have the guy that has tents and stuff back there. We're gonna need a good cleanup day in there once we get done. But the thing about the mulching is, is that it puts the mulch back on the ground and it holds the cover to keep any erosion, keep us in line with DPD. So I'm trying to get that settled through, but Ronnie said he might be spraying before he get back in there, before it dries up some more. I think that big hole in the back was the original runoff from the building, the Ingles building. The catch pond, that's what that was. Yeah, and then the last grant we got, when Jennifer helped with that, we kind of redone that catch pond at the very back, and then section along the, that we planted and all that, so that helped catch some of that runoff. I think they put like four different sections of ponds that fucking jumped through before it, the creek, the big one in the back. I just think that area would be a good spot for a dog park. How about we just make y'all meet offline, and call Terry and aggravate him, and think about it, and that was something that.
I think it's cheap, I think.
Yeah, it can be expensive if you wanna put all the things, and a lot of them can. I think the lawn, we can't pull them through, and it could be cheap.
I was just thinking about it, basically, some of this parking.
You see the little section where they end?
It'd be amazing, I mean, State Parks, other places we go camping, I mean, you've got dog areas for a lot of them, but it is pretty neat.
Dog statistics show sixty percent of all households have dogs living inside the house, sleeping in the beds, on the couches. Now, I'm telling you, believe it or not, it is. Isn't that right, Larry?
He was thinking, so. Alright, I just consider the new business. I'm gonna read off the consent agenda, then we'll get into the other items we talked about. Approval of the agenda, approval of the January minutes, approval of the splosh equipment for the police department on the new body cameras and car cameras for the three and in patrol cars. We'll verify that price, but I hope it was around seventy-two, seventy-one a piece, I believe is what I had listed for that. Information about the accounting software, we will scan all that in and get it into you as well, it's just more information. Approval to start the public hearings on the per-repub orders for the public hearings, and we'll set them dates as soon as we get through and verify with attorney all days and dates, and we'll publish that, try to have the final one the second Monday of our commission meeting, probably at five o'clock. And then discussion about DDA, we're gonna try to get that revised, we just think that's informational, but more or less acknowledged, let's get it revised and move it forward. Anything else on the consent agenda that we need to approve? No, I'm taking a motion, or the items are ready to consider on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion, my Commissioner Powell. Seconded by Commissioner Wooten. We have a discussion on items. Not all approved? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we need a motion for the cosponsor with the nineteen forty-five days and to approve their special use permit of the park and Civic Center those days, just like we have for the last several years.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Powell. Seconded by Commissioner Wooten. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. No executive session, I know of Commissioners, needing a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Powell. Seconded by Commissioner. Before we call a vote, I remind everybody, tomorrow is Valentine's Day, remember your sweethearts. I hope everybody has a wonderful day and wonderful month, and please come by and see anybody and talk to us. Lot of stuff going on, we appreciate the info.
And I just want to thank our mayor for training us on these laptops, moving us forward into the.
Again, you're seeing a rough track, we're gonna have a more in-depth thing with that, so.
He's retiring, he's teaching those dogs new tricks.
He's got a lot to learn, don't you wonder?
All in favor for adjournment? So yeah, I'll thank you all. Thank you all. Come back and see you.